We're ready to go.
Do we need our thirty second?
Yeah, we'll go for thirty seconds. They said we can just start now.
All right, are you ready?
We're ready.
Okay, so we have two topics tonight that we alluded to earlier. One is making a recommendation, obviously work sessions, we're not voting, but the question that board members wanted to talk about was where do we want to do our meetings and then that leading into when do we want to start back at in person for our work sessions and board meetings? And so that's really the topic. I'm assuming we would. From a location standpoint, it'll be easiest to use the high school auditorium again, just so that we know all the technology works. Unless somebody has a different idea for that, but then it would just be deciding when.
Yeah, does anyone have any? Any thoughts either about location or start time?
My thoughts. Okay, if Scott's on, go ahead.
No, go go ahead, Dave.
Scott, you're up. Dave muted himself.
All right. My only question was, are we looking at the same location for both work sessions and board meetings? Because a work session, I guess I value, you know, going back to our to our retreat that we had where we talked about having a round table for work sessions and more of a U shape, you know, for for board meetings. I'm all in favor of that idea because I'm just thinking to the time that we were in the auditorium and I thought that was work workable. I felt kind of distanced from everybody, you know, not not the other board members, but just, I don't know. I mean, you're up on a stage and the lights in your eyes and it's like, okay, I guess. You know, this will work for a board maybe, but for a board meeting, but for a work session, I don't think that particular configuration would be effective.
I guess I'm looking at it and thinking, you know, the auditorium, yes, that's the easiest. But it was really difficult to see whoever was asking a question in the audience, let alone being able to hear them. And I guess I would prefer, you know, the lecture hall, if we can do that over there, that brought everything in a little closer and, you know, I I don't know, I'm just tossing that out there. I thought that that was, you know, at least somewhat workable there. I I agree with Scott about during a you know, work session like this, I would much rather, let's find someplace that we could have, you know, distance, but yet not so far and not so such a big, you know, space that you can't, you know, deal with it, I guess, Scott.
Maybe maybe we maybe we say, okay, we'll do the lecture hall for our work sessions and the auditorium for our board meetings, or maybe to Bob's point, I heard him chime in with, hey, what if we rearranged? You know, yeah, absolutely. If we rearranged in the I I was thinking, at first, when I was thinking rearranging, I'm thinking of people that would have their back to the auditorium seating. But that's really not a lot different than when we're in a boardroom and we have one side of the table that has their back to, you know, people that would be joining us anyway. So either one of those is is fine by me.
Stephanie.
With the implementation of Board Book, we're also relying on technology. So I know when we had that was it the special session in the auditorium, my computer ended up dying at the end. So if that's, I mean, it's a small ask, but if we can get some power cords so that all of our our computers are up and running.
I think we can adjust the lighting and stuff from that audience stamp. Point, we could, we could make it brighter in there. If that was okay.
I think, I mean, if we can make the lecture hall work, I feel like if we even if we rearrange on the stage, I think we're still going to get that. You know, it's this giant, maybe it doesn't feel necessarily as much like we're having that cooperative workspace, work environment type thing. I don't know if others feel that way. I mean, I'm open to either one. Whichever one we think will work best, but I do like the idea of the lecture hall for one and then the auditorium.
I guess if we could just make sure we turn the lights up in the auditorium and and make sure if anybody's going to say anything, walk over to the mic and speak so that we can hear it up there. I guess that's, and I was sitting on the end, I thought, gee, we, I should be able to hear the best, but it didn't seem like it. I mean, I couldn't hear what was being asked or said, basically.
Yeah, I guess if we think we're going to be, since we're doing budget discussions, if we think we're going to be having administrators frequently at the meetings or a number of people at the meetings to talk about the budget adjustments, then we probably do need to go with the bigger space to be more accommodating. Scott.
Yeah, I, that's an excellent point. I hadn't even taken that into consideration, but based on previous experience, I would highly recommend a larger space because we wound up having community listening sessions and community meetings in the cafeteria at the middle school last time. So so having having a larger space like that, I think, could be an excellent idea.
Right, Lisa?
I think what we've got to consider is what's the purpose of each meeting? And so if we're going to have a a community event, that needs to be in a larger space. I feel like the lecture hall does accommodate about twenty. I don't know what the space in that is, but I know we have a B C class in there with teens of people. And I do think that's a good workspace and that having a smart board can facilitate some conversation. So I I still lean towards lecture hall for work session. And if we feel like the auditorium is best set for technology, I think that's fine for a board meeting.
Are we with by saying lecture hall, are we talking about the room across from the main office at the high school?
That's what I'm thinking of.
As we do our weekly admin meetings in there, I'm I'm trying to picture in my mind what that looks like to do a work session and have other people come into that in there because it's it's not as fluid of a setup to to, you can't move furniture around in there.
Well, that's true, and I usually have to start worrying about the seating about six hours in advance because I feel like it's a pretty good chance I'm going to fall getting it out of those seats. But it gives a chance for one side to face the other. And I think we've also talked about, or at least MSBA has talked about meeting in person, but accommodating public through a through a different delivery system. So whether that's a video into another place, because as we talked about this weekend, our meetings are meetings in public, they're not public meetings. We could start meeting in person without having public in attendance, so we get good at it. But having them be available.
Right, and Brian, so you had, you wanted to add something.
Yeah, the lecture hall, the only issue I have with the lecture hall is that it I've sat in there enough times to know that that space, that horseshoe is very broad. But I don't know how, you know, from a perspective of looking, seeing each other and that kind of thing. It's not as easy as I think people think it is. That space is pretty tight, and unless you're in the first, say, couple of rows. And by the way, in terms of being spread out, it gets difficult, but unless you're in the first couple of rows, that horseshoe gets broad. And I just don't know if we're going to be able to communicate the way we think we're going to be able to in there. And not to mention the fact that the seating is the most uncomfortable humanly possible.
Yeah, it's meant for kids, basically, but the, you know, I agree that it's it has some difficulties, but is there a better place either in the middle school or in the high school that puts us, you know, at a closer plane? But yet distance enough that we can still, you know, like I said over the weekend, it's good to see facial expression and being able to to, you know, kind of get a drift about how we're going and what we're doing. I'll, I see Lisa.
I mean, could we set something up in like the cafeteria at the high school?
I'd recommend the media center.
That's what I was just going to propose, the middle school media.
Middle school media center.
Okay. Does that sound like a happy compromise? All right.
Are you thinking for both then, to try doing both at the media center?
I'm open either way, for sure work sessions there. If you feel like the capacity is sufficient for a board meeting, I like the idea of it being close to the district office too, so that we get staff with the right materials there.
It's got the most flexible seating. It does have space if you wanted to come and be a part of it. I suppose if it doesn't work for both, we could always move back to the auditorium if we needed to.
Yeah. I'm okay. I mean, I'm flexible.
Yeah, I say let's give the middle school media center a try, and if it doesn't work, we adjust course.
I'd agree.
All right.
Am I hearing anyone not in agreement with that? Brian, Becky?
Everyone looking good.
When are we starting this?
Are we ready to go in person with the regular board meeting this month?
To the twenty eighth?
No, no. All right, yep.
Once we get through the budget conversation, one of the things at the end of it will be the October twenty first being an optional work session, and one of my things is going to be, we probably should plan on that. So do we want to start the twenty first as a work session and the media center? Unless somebody has, I I think we're going to need another work session before we hit the twenty eighth.
Okay.
I need to go look at the the schedule. I might have a conflict for the twenty first.
I'm pulling mine up right now. I can make it work.
Does anyone else have a conflict for the twenty first as they're looking?
I'm, I gotta be able to switch a P T because I scheduled one for the end of the day on that one. So if I could get in earlier in the day, I should be fine. But I won't know that probably till tomorrow. Make it for that and we'll have to go from there. I'll just.
And we have plenty of time to post it, so that's not a problem. So if we wait till tomorrow to find out if that works for everybody, we'll we'll probably just need to be thinking if that doesn't work. With next week being M E A, I don't know how many, I don't know how fast in a week we could turn around another work session, but we'll probably need to figure out a different day if the twenty first doesn't work to get one in before the twenty eighth.
And then we have the meeting on the morning of the twenty second, right?
Is, which one is that, Dave?
That's the nine school districts and boards and and superintendents.
Is that a nine seventeen meeting?
Well, yeah, but it's supposed to include all, all nine school districts and their boards. Then you get, you, you guys, the nine of you are the ones who worked out the date and time. We were just told, okay, that's when you need to be there. It's eight thirty to eleven thirty in the morning.
I have nothing on my calendar with regard to, I know nothing about it.
I'll I'll send you the link.
Okay, yeah, I don't have anything on my calendar. It looks like Lisa doesn't either, so.
Make it in the morning on the twenty second at all.
All right, Becky, can you check on that for us too? See what you can find out. All right, any more that we need to discuss on meeting locations? We're good, okay. All right. I will put together, I'll share my screen then. All right, did everybody see that? We're good to go?
Yep, you're good.
All right, switch my camera so I can see and talk and make it look like I'm looking at the camera at the same time. All right, so Jen Subert has helped me immensely the last couple of weeks and we've been going through budget. In some cases, line by line, trying to find out what and where we can make some adjustments to get ready for this work session. So we can have a discussion and I'll, I'm going to try and say this multiple times because I know people are watching this online. This is a first blush at options. We're not making any decisions. We're throwing out ideas and trying to get in, get an a feel from the school board to what is palatable and what isn't for us to move one step farther. Right? So I just want to, if I don't say that enough, please remind me, but I do want to make sure the public is aware that we aren't making any decisions right now. We are simply starting this conversation. So to begin, just a reminder, we do have a timeline that we put together that was shared multiple times before tonight, but as you can see with the red circle, we are at October seventh, which is right on pace with where we said we would be, which is having our first round of options. What I'm thinking is going to change up a little bit, like I said, next week with M E A. I don't know that we'll be ready to have a giant public feedback session, but what's going to happen after tonight? As you can see in the blue, we're going to put together our survey for staff and our survey for parents that we're going to send out. That will include what our initial decisions are after tonight in terms of what we want to consider and ask for feedback on those and ask if that sparks any other ideas that people would like us to look at as far as options. And then, like I just shared, the plan would be for us to either on October twenty first or somewhere really close to the twenty first have our next work session, which would be the next level conversation, getting into the weeds a little bit about what are we truly thinking about, what we want to to do with regard to that. And that's all going to set us up for the twenty eighth. I won't go through the rest of it, but the idea is to set us up for that business meeting on the twenty eighth to have any first round decisions that we want to make, and that'll make sense as I go through the slides of what potentially those could be. And then push us into November, which really setting us up for that first week in December. So to re-ground everyone, over the past month, the school board's been working on a guiding change document. I have had a couple of conversations and input feedback sessions on what's our current context and reality, what's our desired result, what are unacceptable means are? And I think for tonight's purposes, we really want to hone in on what is the board, what's the board's conversation been around, you know, that desired result. So of course, we want a balanced and sustainable budget, not just our current year, but next year and the next year and on and on. A focus on programming that meets the three needs of being desirable, feasible and sustainable. We want multiple voices. We want an equity lens, a focus on mental health. Allied arts are important, even at the elementary level, fine arts programming continuing to be a showcase, athletic programming. That's desirable, feasible and sustainable, focus on career pathways, daily schedules that we can sustain, that we're looking at all departments, that class sizes are at or just slightly above what Metro Exu has put out. And that we really make sure we're looking at district dollars that align to program priorities. Just wondering with as a board, does that capture everything? Any last minute comments that people would want to make as we move forward?
I think that covers it.
Okay. And you'll have to help me. I can't see everybody because I'm sharing my screen. For those of you who've done that before, you, you're very limited after you start sharing. So here's what I want to just help people see is what we've got going on. So when I move my cursor, does that, can you see that?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so I'm going to use that to help guide a little bit here. So I'm over on the left hand side of the screen. So this is our current fiscal year, right? So twenty twenty one, so the I, the idea is what's happening right now. And so our current, what we would consider deficit that we've talked about a little bit due to a number of factors is sitting currently at this one point seven million dollars. Over the past couple of weeks, and we're going to get into the details of this, but Jen, myself, the team have found internal adjustments we can make right now to this current fiscal year to essentially gain us back one point three million dollars of that one point seven. In addition, and we're going to talk about this in a little bit, we've got some assumptions and at least one board action that will need to happen to get us the, an additional two hundred thousand dollars, which would give us an adjusted deficit for this fiscal of only two hundred thousand dollars. So I'm going to recap that a little bit. We're starting at a one point seven. Through all the changes we think we can make right now, we're going to make that only be two hundred thousand dollars to the negative. We can manage two hundred thousand dollars inside of our budget to make adjustments because we don't have yet the final audited numbers. And we can, we anticipate even due to COVID with school not being in session, that there's going to be some fluctuations that we would be able to navigate. So is there any question on that left hand side before I move to the right hand side?
No questions, but I'm anxious to hear about where that one point three million is coming from.
Okay, awesome. All right, so then I'm going to move to the right hand side. So if we push this two hundred thousand dollars forward into the fiscal year and we realize an annual expense increase, which is typical of one to one point two million. We do have to adjust for a declining enrollment, right? So we already know that our class sizes graduating continue to be bigger than our kindergarten classes. So we need to make sure we call that out and we don't forget about it. Why it's a range is because based on our October one counts, what we know is that at a minimum, we're down about thirty going into next year. What we don't know is how many kids we're going to get back if COVID's done and we're back into a normal schedule. So as we look at numbers, we're anticipating an assumption of this giant swing. So that's our biggest variable right now is this giant swing. We're going to assume a technology adjustment, meaning we don't put a hundred thousand dollars into our technology account. And then we're going to assume taking two hundred thousand dollars out of the, what's considered our fund balance and putting it towards this. So that gives us a deficit assumption going into next fall of one point four to one point nine million. So we're kind of, while we've been able to recapture for this fiscal year, that got us flattened out almost, but we got to redo this whole game again for the fall. The nice thing is we're starting right now to do this. A couple of things that we don't know. There's some chatter about the state holding us harmless with enrollment, meaning instead of using this year's counts of October one, which are obviously lower, they would use last year's numbers to fund the schools. But it's just chatter at this point, so we don't know whether it's going to happen or not. The other thing we don't know is what's going to happen as we move forward through the school year with regard to COVID. If we have, if we end up moving back into COVID, or if we stay in this mode of COVID even next fall, that has a huge implication if we don't get more CARES dollars and things like that. So that's the forecast. What's not on the slide that I do want to make sure everybody is once again reminded about is that twenty two, twenty three, so the following school year, that's the first year we can go out for a levy. So our, our first chance at going out for for additional funding or renewing the second of the two levies is going to be the fall of twenty two. So we need to keep that in them, in the backs of our minds. And so the way that I've been talking about this with staff is rather than a single year by single year, we really need to make sure this is probably a three year planning cycle. Because we may want to do some short term reductions, knowing in the back of our minds that that's something that we would put back in place as part of that levy renewal that we would go out for. Questions on the right side? Yeah, Scott.
And maybe if you're going to cover this later, that'd be great, but the fund balance transfer, I'm not understanding the two hundred thousand seems somewhat arbitrary.
Yep.
So if you're going to go into that later, just push me off and I'm happy to wait.
I'll talk about it in this next slide if there's any other questions on the previous one.
Great, thank you.
I was just going to bring up the, or asking about the three year planning cycle and the idea of having some short term reductions with the possibility of a levy. And just this community has been incredibly amazing with, you know, supporting our asks when they've come out for a vote. But I also don't want to put us in a position where we've counted on that happening if for some reason we're not able to to get what we need, so.
Fair enough. Yeah, we need to be really strategic about it. Just Scott, I see Scott's hand.
Yep, just one more question, and that is what assumptions are we making about the increase in dollars from the state of Minnesota per the formula?
Zero. We're assuming nothing.
Good, thank you.
Conservative, conservative on that one. All right, so here's here's what I'm looking at to share with you as far as the, as what with the current details of what we've done. So for the current year, again, on the left hand side, you'll see that one point seven as a negative. Split out are the internal adjustments and the assumptions. So if you follow the the red arrow upwards, here's what we've done. We've gone back and looked at our general fund. What we've been paying out of the general fund with regard to staffing across the district. Because when we look at our gifted and talented dollars, our long term facility maintenance dollars and our capital dollars, there's the ability to code portions of or full F T Es of staff, depending upon what their jobs are to this categorical funding, rather than taking it out of the general fund, which is what we're currently doing. So as Jen and I went through that and went back through the statutes and looked at what was allowable, we're able to recapture five hundred thousand dollars essentially from our general fund deficit by shifting those F T Es into either gifted and talented long term facility maintenance or capital dollars. And so that frees up a third of that for there. The second piece is we have had a discussion with the building principals and the idea that because we're in COVID, we probably aren't spending as much money on supplies at the building level this year. Additionally, a lot of the supplies that we've had to purchase have been COVID related. Therefore, they qualify to be paid for out of our CARES dollars. So what the conversation was, we had with our building principles was if we looked at all of our five buildings and said, if we take a twenty to twenty five percent reduction in what we originally budgeted for you in supplies, can we do that because we think that'll get us to about two hundred thousand dollars towards the deficit? And that's where we've landed. And what we shared with the principals is that if we do that, then as needs come up, if they're COVID related needs, we would then use additional CARES dollars to to fund those if they appropriate, if they're appropriate for that. But then that supply budget money would go back toward, would be put back against that deficit. And then finally, a big chunk of this, and I think Megan's on here, but I can't see everybody if there's questions. If you'll remember back, and I don't know what the date was, but it's going to be last year. When Dave Haven and I've had conversations with Dave since and with Megan, there was a bunch of special education staffing that was budgeted for. That as we moved in to COVID and then into this year, that special education staffing was never added actually as people on staff. And so as as we went through that list and worked with Dave and Megan, you can see it's actually a a really large amount. You can see it's actually a, a really large amount of money that we budgeted for, but aren't spending in staffing. That said, we still have staffing for special education that's sitting out there that we haven't yet filled. That is not a part of this. So for example, there was budgeted for nineteen PSAs in our system. And we still need seven of them, but we haven't filled all seven. We're keeping those in the budget right now. But we are going to assume not using or, or hiring twelve of them, if that makes sense. So. That's how internally we've come up with one point three million dollars um as an offset. Any questions on that part of this?
I have a question. Um, I can't see people's hands, so I apologize. Um, so if we have the six hundred thousand dollars in special education funding that we don't need right now because of COVID and how things have kind of worked out. Is the six hundred thousand dollars we're expecting to need to add? In the twenty-one, twenty-two school year that will go towards um the deficit then?
My understanding is not at this point. That's not, that's not necessarily the case because of some of the shifting that's happened. And then um the continual adjustments that Megan or Dave was working on. And Megan is now working on with changing up how we're doing some delivery models. So I don't think we can assume that we'll need that back.
Okay.
And I can't see hands either. So if there's someone else who has a question.
I did, I, I had raised my hand. I did have a question, but Kelsey's question covered it. So thank you.
Um, so then if we shift to the bottom right, the two, where does the two hundred thousand dollars come, come from? And Scott, this'll get to your question, I think. Um. So we've added both the negatives and the positives in here. We split the difference from that previous slide. If you remember the assumption about the declining enrollment for next year between the three hundred and the eight hundred. We picked right in the middle, split four hundred for purposes of argument. Um, we looked at um our end-of-year net audit assumption. So again, we don't have the audit back yet. Our guess is right now, and what I've shared with people, is that we're right around that three hundred and forty thousand dollars to the good. So we'll put that in there at this point. Once we get the final audit document, we'll know whether we were. Whether it's a little bit lower, a little bit higher, that's just the way that those end-of-year audits go. But we're, we're fairly confident for sure in the three forty or thereabouts. With the fund balance use assumption. So what we're assuming, and this is where the board action part of this comes in. What we're assuming is we're gonna need a little help from the fund balance over the next couple of years to help pull this off. And we landed on two hundred thousand dollars as a starting point to get us through the next couple of years. That could be more or less depending upon the board's um level of, of wanting to do that. Um, what will change is just what more or less we have to do in other places. So the two hundred thousand from an arbitrary standpoint, Scott, is that's a placeholder. It's a starting spot, and that's really the board need, that's where that line item is assumptions and board action. Because the board's gonna need to have a discussion about what's their level of comfort in using some of fund balance to help sustain us in this. And then we all know about the technology set aside adjustment. The board will need to also take action on stopping that transfer. We right now transfer a hundred thousand dollars every year into our own tech set aside. That is sitting just over nine hundred thousand dollars right now. Uh, we are able to use some of our CARES dollars for uh technology. So that's why we're confident right now. We don't need to use this, and it would be better suited to be in the general, back into the general fund. Yeah, I see Scott's hand.
Just a question on the uh, thank you for explaining the two hundred thousand. I understand that now. So essentially, it's. It comes down to what it always would come down to, which is what is the board? Okay with moving out of the fund balance? And I think that will be a question on what it is, and is it a one-time or is it a kick the can down the road to next year? You know, and then we have to take care of that. But. Uh, my question is up on the top, the shift staffing expense from general fund to gifted, talented, long-term uh facilities, maintenance and capital. What does that? What impact does that have on those? Is that a permanent shift? And then what does that do to those funds going forward? How, how are we sitting in those right now and what does that look like?
Sure. Sure. So um. The gifted and talented fund would not be something into perpetuity. We don't have enough funding. We have enough funding right now for probably two years worth. To cover that. So that would take care of this fiscal year that we're living in right now and then potentially the next one. But after that, that's gonna be added back into the deficit in that twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three column. So it's a short-term help. Long-term.
And, and directionally, what is that amount?
Um, that was about a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
We have a pretty healthy carryover in gifted and talented right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, long-term facility maintenance, that could be an ongoing thing. Um, we have a really healthy long-term facility maintenance budget right now. Um, and Jen, at any point, stop me if I'm, I'm going off uh off the, off to left a little bit, but um. We have certain custodial maintenance or really maintenance positions. And um supervisor of maintenance positions that because of the percentage of their jobs that has to do with maintenance. They qualify for using those dollars for part of their salaries or hourly wages. And that can go on as long as we want them to go on. And then capital dollars. That's really um where we can, because of the roles that our technology staff have. There's percentages of their FTEs that can be coded to the capital dollar fund because they're in technology. And again. Until we don't have a technology budget, they could go on into perpetuity with that one as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what, just, just one more question.
Yeah.
And I, I'm sure this is obvious, but I want to ask it anyway. By recouping that six hundred thousand dollars from special education staffing, are we leaving ourselves in any way, shape or form short for this year?
Not at this point. Um, not at this point. Again, so the answer to that is. If we hit. If we were to hit December, January, and we went all back in person right now. We might have some, some needs that we would have to do. So it, there is a chance that. That that could go down a little bit, and then we might have to readjust. Um, I don't have any indication at this point that that's the case. Um, and that's part of the reason why we're leaving those seven FTE worth in the budget right now. Because we haven't hired those yet, and that, we're actually having trouble finding people. Um, but they're still there.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I thought the answer would be, but just wanted to.
Sure.
Double check.
No, the more eyes, the better.
Well, just, I, I wanna make sure we're all on the same level coming into this, so we all have that same foundation of understanding.
And I appreciate that because that, I honestly, that is what Jen and I have been trying to do for the last two weeks is. As we're working through, making sure everybody administratively has the same level of understanding um. With regard to what, what we need to do. Um, and so we're not just jumping to conclusions, but we're making the best decisions we can. Alright. So here's probably the slide that I'm, that is potentially gonna give people the most angst, but at the same time. Um, it's a slide that. It's hard to put it out there without providing any dollar amounts to it, because otherwise the board can't have a conversation. Because to the point of everybody being on the same page, nothing is created equally in this, right? So for example. Reducing dues and memberships, the board could say, yeah, let's go for that. Great. But as you can see, it only gets us a maximum of ten thousand dollars of savings over time. Whereas some of the other stuff you'll, you'll see is they're large chunks. So again, I'm gonna stop and just say to everyone listening and the board, this is a first. An initial adjustment options for the board to take a look at and say. We really want you to dig deeper into this, or we're not interested in you even spending any time on this. Um, this list is no, in no way, shape or form a definitive list, but after going through all of the um. The, the giant options that we had put together. Once we were able to meet and winnow things down and collapse things and actually start putting dollar amounts to stuff. This is the list that really gets us to the starting point for you as a board to say. Here's the different areas we think we can make some adjustments. On top of what I've shared in the past couple of slides. And so this is really the slide for you as a board. To ask questions and have a conversation about what does this truly mean? And I'll walk through each one of them or topically first, and then um we can open that up. But again, I wanna make sure that um we don't have folks jumping to any conclusions by what they see here. This is not a. A cut list, it's not a final list, it is a initial options list. Oh, I put this on the left-hand side, I just, just for sake of letting people know, we're working towards one point four to one point nine. Million dollars in our overall adjustment. So I'll start at the top. Um, they're in order from least to largest impact. These are what at this point in time, first blush, Jen and I think is the maximum amount. So when we're looking at decreasing memberships and dues district-wide, so when we look at things like our C membership. Uh, AMSD membership, any memberships we have to organizations. We think we could get a maximum of ten thousand dollars if we'd made some reductions there. So. Way outside the classroom, not an impact to necessarily direct impact to kids or families, but that'd be the maximum we think we can get. Second, uh, increasing fees that we charge at the high school and middle school. The board just got off of a conversation about this not too long ago. And so what you see reflected there is really if we made an additional adjustment to increasing fees. The maximum we would probably see is about twenty thousand dollars back in. Um, we could then pass our credit card processing fees onto our users. So um whenever any of us use a credit card. To purchase something online through the district, there's a credit card processing fee. If we transferred those processing percentage fees onto the users of or the purchasers of that, rather than paying for that ourselves. We could see a maximum of twenty thousand dollars in savings.
Just to jump into that one, do we have the option, like many places I've seen, you can, you can uh take it directly from your bank account at no fee? Would that be in, would we still be able to offer parents a way to, to pay their fees without forking over the whatever it is three years? You know. Let's just use three percent.
Yeah, I don't know. I, that might be something Jen would have to dig into.
Yeah, I could look into that more right now.
Yeah, just, just kinda curious, like, I don't know, when I buy license tabs or, you know, whatever the case, if I use. If I just put it directly to my checking account, it pulls the money out and I don't pay the additional fee.
Sure. So um. Reducing clubs is the next one. So what we, what we have this one out there for is we have a number, obviously, of clubs that happened at the middle school, the high school. This would be one of those, as we talked before, like a short-term thing, hoping that we would get it back. Do we wanna take a look at saying we're gonna reduce what we offer by ten percent? Because clubs play a huge role in what our kids are able to do, particularly kids who aren't our athletic kids, but this provides an opportunity for them to be involved. And so um this is just, again, throwing it out there as an option, a ten percent reduction in clubs across. Um, the board would give us about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Question there for you, Bob. Do, do we have to reduce that across the board? And do we have any of these clubs that are carrying a positive balance? That we could, we could a little more selectively keep the same number of clubs that we have. But club A, oh, you have two thousand dollar balance, so we're not going to contribute this year. Club B. You're at zero, so yes, we are going to contribute this year. Just for instance, I'm just gonna thinking aloud here.
Yeah, we could look, probably look at what that would look like. I think it will depend upon how. Who deposited the money into the clubs?
Yeah, and that, and that's, I, I know it's, it sounds like a simple question, and I knew it would be way more complex than that, so.
But we can look at that. Um, again, it's uh these first, these first. Like twelve or fifteen are really trying to stay as far away from that instructional classroom piece as possible. Um, and but, and yeah, we can look at some details like that.
Okay, thank you.
How would we determine which clubs are reduced?
That would be the, that would be, that would happen if you as a board said, you know what, that's when we want you to look into more. And see what you can dig up and, and spend some more time with, and then we'd come back to you with it. And, cause I wouldn't, I don't have that answer now, but that's a great question.
Yeah, just because I would be concerned if it was solely based on like how many students were in the club since. Um, you know, for some students, clubs are the only way that they connect, and they're almost like safe places for some of our kiddos. And so.
Yeah.
You know, how do you, how do you make that decision? So.
Yep. And I think that brings up a good point from a, if you're thinking of things of how as a board, do you process through this, right? One of the questions, even though there's, could be a, a seemingly large dollar amount, it's really that question to whom at what cost? So as you brought up. It might on its face seem like, wow, that's an easy way to get twenty-five thousand dollars, but. Does it create a situation where we're not able to mirror a significant value we have? For our kids, and so therefore it's not, we need to find another place to get that X amount of dollars because that's not where we wanna take it from. So I think that's a great, great point as you're processing through how to have your conversation as a board. Um, decreasing high school security. Um, so this is, is simply what it states. We, we hire security for our high school. Um, it does have implications. Um, that would be, if that is something that you would want us to dig into and really. Kind of parse out what are the implications of not doing that, we could do it, but the cost savings there would be about fifty-five thousand dollars. Um. Uh, the most cost savings. Uh, we could look at and changing our health services model. Um, meaning across our buildings, can we do it a different way? Can we, can we staff our buildings differently than what we do? It's an option that some other districts have gone to. If we did that, we think the most we would get out of doing that is around sixty thousand dollars savings. Um, we could look at removing our department leader positions at our middle school and high school. We don't have them at the elementary school. So by doing that, there's a lot of stipend, uh stipends that go out based on department leader positions. That might be a short-term thing again. It would force um the high school and middle school to kind of redesign, how do they do that leadership? But we simply wouldn't. Uh, provide those leadership positions either for a short term or a long term. You can see that's got a pretty hefty height, uh price tag to it. Uh, for those positions. Um, we've talked about the technology contribution. That's the same thing I talked about before. That's in the hundred thousand dollar range. There's a couple of opportunities to uh look at readjusting how we're running our ALC model. Um, all of them get us about the same uh dollar amount, which is around a hundred thousand dollars. These are things like. Um, do we move all of our ALC programming to nine seventeen? And we don't have ALC here. Do we move our ALC program out of our leased space and into our high school? Um, do we bring our nine seventeen, our kids that are in nine seventeen for ALC? And have them all come back to Hastings and we make a larger ALC? So there's a couple of different ways we could do it, but adjusting the ALC model. Might be able to get us about a hundred thousand dollars annually, because it's a, it's just an expensive program to run. The building supply budgets I talked about before, that would be something that we do one time, we carry on, we wanna talk about that. The utilization of the fund balance, like I shared in the last slide, it's a variable amount, depends upon the boards, uh what the board's thinking there. And then we get into probably the big ones, right? Um, they are both large from impact and they're large from dollar amounts. We've spent time with all of our building principals over the last week and a half. And really having that conversation that stems back to that Metro Exu class size study. Uh, which is what does it look like if we were to. Restaff our buildings so that our class size averages would end up. Restaff our buildings so that our class size averages would end up being at the Metro Exu average. Or slightly above and slightly above, we decided we would quantify it one and a half above what the average is. So what I want to explain there is that doesn't mean that if currently I'm a third grade teacher and I have. Eighteen kids in the classroom, that this means that my classroom would go up to nineteen or twenty. It means that we would raise those second grade classrooms to the Metro Exu average. And then possibly up one point five higher than that, that's how we would staff the buildings. So in making that change at the elementary schools, we think we could get around three hundred thousand dollars in savings across all three elementary schools. Um, and so um at the middle schools, applying the same thing, if we staffed it with that in mind. We think we could get about four hundred thousand dollars at the middle school. And then we did um work with um Mike and really went through, he and Jen have done a lot of work on this one. Of really two, looking at the high school in two different ways. They both end up with about the same level of maximum um dollars that we would recoup. Being around nine hundred thousand dollars. The first is keeping the seven period day in play, but making class size adjustments. So essentially what we're saying here is. We we can keep offering what we're offering, but those class sizes have to go up. Because we we we've got to gain some efficiency in there. Or on the flip side, we could look at shifting from a seven period day to a six period day. Keeping class sizes a little lower, but we're going to decrease options for kids doing that. Because you can't run as many things in a six period day as you do in a seven period day. It would also as make the assumption that study halls would not be in the mix in a six period day. And then finally, we have staff attrition. So we would, it'd be in a mode right now that as staff retired. We would be looking at or moved on for any reason, it just wouldn't have to be retirement. We would really be looking at, do we need to refill that position? Or would it make sense to readjust how we're staffing that grade level, that content area? That office, whatever, and we just don't hire a person behind the person who left. And there's a question mark there because we don't know what that will be yet. Um, so as a starting point, that's what I have. You'll notice if you look at everybody who's on here, we've asked um Steve Kovach, Megan Miller. Uh, Mike Johnson, Paul Baker, Kyle Latch, uh Matt Esterby, they're all on. If there are questions specific to some of those programming areas, special ed, elementary staffing, middle school staffing, high school staffing. Um, otherwise, I'll open it up to the board and like I said. The goal for me is really to understand if there's anything on here that you're saying. Hmm, take that off, we're not interested in looking at that now. Um, or if there's something that you you for sure want to say, dig into this more because I'm not at a comfort level that we. We we go any further with it.
So when we talk about the high school seven, um, when you talk about increase of class sizes, how much are we talking? Percentage of an increase?
Mike, do you want to kind of answer that? You've got the best spreadsheet explanation and there you are, I see you.
Nope, I'd be happy to to look at that. We are um as a school at twenty five point five students per class and the Metro Exu average is twenty seven point three. So in order to go to, as we were talking, that one point five above, our average would be at um. Twenty nine point three.
So Mike, at that twenty nine point three, that's where you see the approximately nine hundred thousand dollar savings?
Correct.
So on average, about four students per class.
And that's, that's all classes.
Yeah.
Do you have savings if we went just with the average? Metro Exu.
Um, we we could calculate that. But again, we would be. I'm going to just, yes, we would have some savings and we'd want to dial those models in for you. So rather than say an exact amount, there certainly would be some savings if we were to go to that average. But again, if if I'm at. Twenty five point five and the average is twenty seven point three as the, we would get all those departments there. The one point five above goes to twenty nine point three.
I think that question, Kelsey, is a perfect uh entry point into what we're looking for from the board. So like I said, these are maxims, right? So this is, this is the full tilt model. And we can, we can edge back. Again, in total, we're trying to get to the one point four to one point nine. So to that point, kind of what to what Mike said, if the board wants us to look at something like. All right, give us, give us numbers at what it would be if we just did Metro Exu average. We'll dig back into the, back into the formulas and stuff and that would be the information we'd come back with. Um, at our next work session. Um, and if there's a couple of different things that folks want to. Um, I know Mike's got it put together right now, uh what we asked him to do was kind of do a sliding adjustment. Like what's the point two, the point four, the point one that we would reduce here, here and here as we worked our way up to that total amount. Um, so we can do it, uh we just need to know if that's a question you'd like to have answered for our next meeting.
If I could just comment, I I absolutely back Kelsey's question that was. I I was going to ask that same thing and just for those who didn't do the calculation. Adding up everything down to uh down through supply budgets gets us to about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So but and then we can start talking about what we would be willing to take out of the fund balance. So bottom line. I guess that I'm seeing is that I'm not seeing us getting to the one point four to one point nine without there being staffing changes. Some type of adjustment at our facilities.
Uh, what did you say six seventy came down to, which line?
Six seventy takes us down to the board, the fund balance contribution amount variable.
Got it, okay.
And I think that's probably a fair statement, uh Scott, where we are as a budget, I Jen pipe in. If when we look at where we're at with budgets, when you made your last budget adjustment in. In twelve thirteen thirteen fourteen, you you adjusted a lot to your system. Um, you you took a lot out of the system to save. Uh, classroom, teachers, all that kind of stuff. And so you are, we are at that spot of making decisions that are going to impact. Class sizes and things of that nature, that that's just where that's our reality right now.
Um, as we talk about adjustments, did we have any classes that were. Uh, very lightly uh participated in that would. That would be candidates for elimination. At any of that, I I like, I pres, this would be more at the high school level, I'm sure. Because at the elementary and middle school level, it's basically, I mean, there's not a ton of electives there.
I think that would probably get into more of the next conversation. What what we've talked through with um all the principles is. We want to give them kind of the sandbox of. Here's how, here's, for example, here's how many FTE it's going to take to get us to that mark. And as a building principal, answering then that question that you raised, Scott. You know you're building the best, how do you, how do you best get there to meet the needs of the students that you know in your building? Um, I have found that that works the best and it allows the principals to. Um, maintain that managerial part of their building because they're in it every day. Um, but that would also then be something that would be a next set of answers that our principals could come back to. And probably provide some options, here's, here's a couple of different ways we could do this. And what I'm thinking about and I'm sure that that's the stuff that. That Mike is spinning in Mike's head right now as he's looking at numbers and stuff, right? Is that's the turmoil in the in the principal's head as they're looking at.
Yeah, I see at least, I don't know, Kelsey, if you can see everybody, I have a view up, but I see Lisa with her hand up.
Thank you, Scott, so thank you.
Thanks, Scott, yeah, as we go into the next. Work session, I'm drawing ever closer to my calendar to find out if it's possible. Um, I would like to see the staffing changes dialed into a Metro SQ mean. And I would also like to understand. Ability question about about the two high school models. Because I don't want to make. Uh, making large classroom size increase if we're, if it's not really sustainable, if that only solves us for that first. That first year that we make the change, I want us to make sure that we're looking at those two alternatives uh very critically with regard to sustainability.
Yeah, and looking at the high school models, I think I would also like to have a better idea of what. Decreased options really means. Um, I think that um kind of understanding what we may lose with that option would be important.
Okay. Just uh one more, one more item on staff attrition. So the the staff attrition or the right sizing, I feel like that's something that we do every single year anyway. Um, so staff attrition, do we have any idea or could we? Uh, work with our groups to understand if we are going to have retirements coming up at the end of this year? Because replacing a long tenured teacher with a, I'm not going to say brand new, but because. That's not what we prescribe, we say fill the position with the best person that we can. Um, but there usually is a savings there. So i- if we could get a bead on that, that may help us.
So we have an, we can get an idea, um, we can't really ask people if they're going to retire. Um, but we can get an idea of who's eligible for retirement. Um, and we can work with our, we can work with our groups. Um, another conversation that's come up is um whether or not we would want to entertain for folks that are. Close to retirement, some type of a um.
Package to go away.
Package to retire earlier than what they would, uh for that very reason, right? Many districts do that. Um, so we're going to work on uh that with for sure our teachers group um to see where where they're at with that.
Okay.
I saw Dave had his hand up.
Yeah, and Stephanie did as well and 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 Lisa.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go with Dave, Stephanie, then Lisa.
My quick question is, okay, have we ever done a package enticement? For folks that are close to retirement in the past? The second part of that is, you know, generally, how has. Um, retirement's been in the last three to five years? I mean, are we a riding a a rise that's going to go down? Are we looking at substantially a number of folks that uh. Uh, reached the retirement age or have gone past the retirement age and are are still working, you know? Kind of thoughts along those lines, please?
Yep, so my understanding is the district has looked at doing incentives in the past, but hasn't. Done a retirement incentive in the past, actually gone through with it. Um, an initial glance um at our staffing is that we have a more veteran staff right now. Um, so I would anticipate that that will be something over the next five years, six years. That we'll start seeing more and more retirements out of the system. Um, but the again, that just depends upon what people's wishes are. Because a lot of people that are in teaching love to teach and that's their, it's more of an avocation than anything else and so they stick around.
Alright, so Stephanie.
Um, Scott asked the question that I had about staff attrition, um but now I have two other questions. Uh, not surrounding staffing or class sizes. Um, more in reference to the reducing building supply budget. What what are we defining a supply budget is, is that stuff that's going to be taken out of um. You know, like teacher supplies, my concern is that I don't want teachers have to pay more. Um, out of pocket than what they already are. Um, and then my my other question too surrounds the high school security. I know we had previous discussions, Gal, when was it in the beginning of the year? Um, I don't know if we had budgeted in the changes regarding the high school. Um, security system and and stuff that we were, that we were looking at. Um, if you can talk a little bit more about um that high school security piece.
You want to hit that one, Mike, as far as what you're?
Sure, we um for a number of years have had a security person that's been hired. To supervise after school from two thirty until eight or nine o'clock and it's been uh, it's been excellent. It's provided that level of security and comfort. Um, however, we also have staff members that are in the building during that time. And so the the change would be is those of us that are here need to be more aware and try and support students and uh community members. Differently rather than relying on that security, we also have security during the school day out in the parking lots.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And then Lisa had a question and.
Yeah, thank you, Kelsey. Um, I just wanted to reflect back to what Scott had shared about where he added up through the supply budgets and came to a total number. I appreciate that, I also think that really the heart of this question and the way we need to approach it is to s- to flip from the bottom. I think we have, we as a board have to dig into the big pieces and. And see how that reflects on the model that we want to serve to students and what we want to provide to students and. Yep, should we be kind of scrubbing the rest on a regular basis? Should we be looking for opportunities much like we do with regard to staff attrition? To me, that's ongoing practice and the question at hand. To me is. Yep, it is time, we have a structural uh imbalance between the students that we're serving. The number of students that we're serving and the way that we're serving them, so that needs to be the place that. Um, our primary amount of energy goes into and not just presume that the first eight items are are done.
And I think that that that's a good point because you do bring up the fact that the. As we continue to decline in enrollment. Right, that, oh, I'm frozen. Or everyone's frozen, maybe I'm frozen.
You're not, we can hear you, I can see you, you're moving.
All right, my screen's just frozen, so as we continue to decline in enrollment. And as the assumption from what we bring in in revenue per student stays roughly the same. We end up in an automatic deficit spending based on keeping our expenses the same. And so we, we do have to be in a mode of continually. Uh, adjusting that budget or finding ways to bring additional revenue in.
Um. Did I see Brian at some point?
Yeah, thank you, Kelsey, um so I'm just curious, um kind of pivoting away from staffing. By the way, I do echo Elisa's sentiment, I think that we do have to attack those big numbers. Um, I am interested though in terms of health services, we just kind of talked about the sixty thousand number. Do we have any feel for what that would look like? I'm just a little bit kind of out there in terms of what we'd be talking about in terms of health services. We're talking about reductions in certain ones, which ones are we talking about, that kind of thing, because I think that area is very important. And I don't want to just glaze over, that's a lot of money, but it's also, there's a lot of things that would be wrapped up into that.
Uh, did you hear the question from Brian? You know, you signed off and then.
Just jumped on, my whole computer shut down.
Okay, we are, um, Brian is looking for more information on um the health adjustment.
Yep.
Piece and what that would actually look like.
So there's a couple of different ways to look at that, we currently staff each of our. Um, buildings with RN nurses and there's ways to staff our buildings with. Um, a combination of RN nurses and health paras. Um, and so you'd be, we'd be looking at ways where, where can we do that? Um, could be the worst idea ever, but it's an option of looking at how to do something differently. Um, so it's not an argument for or against, it just, it just is. So it's not an argument for or against, it just, it just is. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you, Bob. I just, it just was kind of out there and I didn't know exactly where you're going, but I I understand what you're looking at now and obviously it's just. One of many options along a very long list, so I just wanted to get a little clarification there.
Perfect.
Alright, now I can see everyone's faces again, so. Are there any other questions or comments or things that, you know, we want them to look into more before our next work session to keep talking about this? Brian again?
I do think that if we are looking at this idea potentially. Of ALC coming into the high school and things like that, I just would want to make sure that as we start going down there that it's, you know, it's something that we vet. With any, you know. Uh, stakeholders, so that we make sure it's, you know, we're going in the right route and we're not. Um, disrupting something um, for those, for those kids that are involved in that, it could be disruptive. I don't want to do something that's so disruptive that it could really. Cause more harm than good. So I just want to make sure if we start going that real little further, we're looking at that.
Totally agree.
Yeah.
Totally agree. That's one of those things that we'll have to balance that to whom at what cost and is it worth the hundred thousand dollar gain to make that change?
Yep, because I know one of the concerns we've had about that in the past is that some of the students who are in an ALC program would not feel. Comfortable going back um, into the high school um, as a learning environment, and so.
And that's why I brought that up, because I have heard that in terms of feedback in the past.
And I know we've had a couple of conversations with Mike about that as well, and he's got some ideas as far as. Some unique things we could do that balance that or maybe combine a couple of things, so. Um, I think it's a, it, to your point, it's going to take some conversation to really decide if it's something that makes sense. Absolutely.
And Lisa, I saw your hand go up. Before you went black.
Yeah, it's super dark, although I'm really, I'm really, really close to the house, so then I'll get back on.
Wear Witch Project type filming right now.
I know, it's very, if somebody sees movement behind me, I need to know, because nobody should be in the backseat.
Animals neither?
Oh geez, no, not even that. Um. To to loop back to what I'd like to learn more about when we come back in our next work session. Um, and this digs back in at the high school again, and and I think. Extends off of Scott's previous ask about um, either classes or programs that are at a, at a very small service level. I'd like to hear. In that, in that discussion about sustainability of seven period versus six. Um, what programs we see that are not maybe as appealing to our students and might. Might be something that we choose not to offer anymore, as well as, um, and I think this was on a previous list, a conversation about. Uh, having graduation requirements that exceed the state's graduation requirements. I'd like to understand what the implications of those are with regard to the budget and then and how we have to staff to provide those additional requirements.
Yeah, and along those lines, that when we get into that level of conversation, you know, and it's come up once, but. Just a reminder that that once we start getting in those conversations, those are really hard conversations because. It's, it's hard for folks to hear their content area being talked about. Um, and so we just, just to remind people about that, and Mike does a great job of. Reminding us of of really what what that high school has grown into in terms of what's valued in terms of opportunity and stuff, and so. It's just, it's a real sensitive area that we want to make sure we, we take the time to to really. Be sensitive to how we discuss those things as we get into the weeds on it.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. That's a very important point, and I. And maybe I didn't frame my request very well. Um, I just, I just want to understand that if we have programs that. I don't even need to know about the individual program names necessarily, but just to understand that that's part of the evaluation. And uh, and maybe understand the scale of the. Impact.
I think that makes sense. There's one more topic I didn't put on here that Jen and I will be finding more out. Um, on, but we didn't have anything to put, but and that's transportation. There might be some adjustments. To how our transportation works that we might be able to see some uh, reduction in expense. We're just not sure what that is yet. Um, but we'll know more about that um, as we move through the next week or so.
Okay, thank you. I'm kind of scrolling through all these spaces, so. If someone has a question, jump in if I miss you, Lisa.
Um. This just adds a level of complexity and I'm fine if we don't really deal with it. I think we all can appreciate that. Um, the way education is likely to be provided. Is not going to be the same in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and it's not going to be the same going forward. Um, I am not smart enough to understand what that means with regard to budget process and staffing. Um, but but maybe somebody is. I know somebody is. And get, we can maybe at least start having that discussion about what does providing. Education two years out from now, what does that look like? I can appreciate it not being considered too, because boy, it seems hard to think about it.
I think maybe that circles back to a lot of the conversation that you had as a board on Saturday of last weekend. In terms of what does that, what's that tenure model look like? Right? And so not even stopping at two years out, but really, what do you, what do you envision not only for. The time you're on the board, but for the next board, what what education in Hastings should look like for the kids at that time? And that that provides some guideposts, I think that you're alluding to. Um, in terms of what decisions we make short term and what decisions we look to make long term.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that? Sparks a question at this point in time?
I'm really glad you found one point three million dollars for this school year.
Team effort. This was a team effort.
You, you plural, the the collective you, um, that I think that was really great work. So that we have some more time to really um, think through these, these budget adjustments and get us all ready for. The next school year.
Yeah, I can tell you there were quite a few smiles going on around here when we discovered that we've, we got where we got, so. We'll take it for now. It's short, it's short term, but at least it gets us this clear. Is there anything on this list that you don't want us to do anymore with? Or is everything on tape at this point?
I don't know, like Lisa, she had mentioned, you know, flipping it kind of upside down. I would be hesitant to do something like increasing athletic fees. Since we did just increase the athletic fees, but I wouldn't go so far as to say it's completely off the table. But I do think that that's a very small amount compared to what we. Are looking for.
Yeah, I think the same thing with regard to athletic fees. Um. I would. I would not want to have a lot more time put into reducing club expenses. Quite honestly, that just feels like the wrong place to be targeting um, for that, that range. Not to say that it. You know, that it couldn't take a glance, but I don't think that. That that's a place we're going to find a big dollars, obviously, and. It's a direct impact on students, especially non-athletic, non-athletic students, I think. You gotta keep that in there, and I am very. I I'm willing to discuss the health services model, but I am very hesitant. It will be difficult for me to believe that. Moving away from an RN model at the buildings. Is the best fit for our district.
I agree on all those.
Those are the three that I struggle with when I look at this.
What, what was the?
And honestly, I, and the fourth one then is that department leader position, I, it's fine being on the list. I just need to understand what the impact of that is. What that means, really.
Yeah, yeah.
So at increased athletic fees, reducing club expenses, health services model. Are, would be hard for me to get behind, super behind. And then I, I'd like to hear more about the department leader positions in middle school, high school. Um, when we come back together.
So are you suggesting to the board, Lisa, that we just simply leave the clubs, nurses and athletics on at this point? Not do anything more with them, or are you suggesting the board consider just taking those off the list?
I, I would suggest that we take off athletic fees and club expenses. And that the health services model maybe deserves one more week of consideration and understanding. But to me, that's very close to coming off.
Alright.
I agree with.
Personal opinion.
The two.
Anyone who vehemently disagrees with that, or?
Uh, I agree with the athletic fees to to pull those out. I'm just curious about the club expenses and the question that I asked the first time, you know, or the the comment that I made, and again, I don't know the specifics of this. If it is even feasible, legal, anything else, but to examine those clubs and say. You know, hey, we have twenty-five percent of the clubs that have a healthy balance in their accounts. And they could be sustained for at least one year. Or perhaps multiple years. And we could reduce. Contributions to those specific clubs in the near term. Again, I don't know what that means from an equity standpoint or anything else. And it's a, in the grand scheme, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, so if it went by the wayside, I'm not going to. Balk at that. Um, I'm I'm much more concerned about the bigger items.
And I guess that's some of my thought with that is um, that that seems almost like housekeeping, that that could be kind of done on a regular basis. Determining if clubs have enough money and not necessarily um, part of this overall budget adjustment that we should be looking at. Um, because even then, if we're saying that maybe for a year or two, so maybe for a year or two, we have ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars. It doesn't seem like, I think we're getting into the weeds more than we need to on the budget adjustment when we're looking at. One point four to one point nine million dollars.
For for now, I would not spend any time on that.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. What about the nurses and athletics? You want me to leave those on but not spend any time on them as well, or?
I think, I personally think the athletics to some other points have been made, has already been hit once, twice. Feels a little aggressive, so I'd probably take that off just because we just did it.
Okay.
That's just my opinion, of course, there's six other ones, so.
Did we lose Becky?
Yeah, Becky had, we lost her about twenty minutes ago, she had to sign off.
All of a sudden, I'm not seeing her, I'm like, has someone checked in?
She, she sent me a text.
Okay. So anyone have an issue with me taking athletics off of this list for now?
No, no, I support you removing it from the list.
What about nurses? Or helping, health, hurt nurse versus para?
I'm not very comfortable with the registered nurses being taken out, which sounds like that's where we'd end up, or at least some of them. Um, I'd like it taken off, but again, that's one of many.
Yeah, I would at least like to understand it better because I don't think I understand what that model would really look like. Um, but I I'm leaning onto the, I'm hesitant to. Move away from RNs, and so.
I've got a question in the uh, point of the health services. Are we, you know, I really don't want to see us go backwards, but are we meeting our need currently? Do we have an RN in every building?
Mm-hmm. We do. We have our end staff in each of our buildings, yeah.
We do currently. Okay. Um, the only other point I'd want to make in in all of this is. One. We need to keep looking, think that the, you know, we might be at a surprise. Moving forward, depending on what our numbers are at. But I think we can't get complacent and think we can cover the mark. By some of what we see here. I think that uh, it behooves the staff to keep in their back of their mind the best. Possible, I mean, savings options and throw that out to the board. So that we, you know, can can see some of these other ideas. I'm sure there's some other ones that are out there. That, you know, maybe at first glance aren't a big item, but if you look at it collectively. Maybe there's some real money that could be saved along the way and we just aren't uh, reflecting that. So I think as we move forward, we need to keep looking at those items and keep thinking about, you know. Okay, if we think we're comfortable, we probably shouldn't feel comfortable. We should be continually. Monitoring and looking at um, how we can look ahead, you know, and. And be prepared to dig in deeper if we have to.
And I think that's a good, that's a good point. I I think it's also um, you know, a good part, a good time to just put out there. For everyone that's watching is that as a school district, eighty-three percent of our budget is wrapped up in staffing. So. When we look at it from that lens, there's, there's really only so much we can do. That's on the true operational side of it, that's not um, committed to something. Our, our meat and potatoes of our organization is in staffing. And so when we, when we are at over a million dollars and we're looking for that. That's, that's what happens. The other thing is that we want to remember and try to, as, as we put all these ideas out. You know, that we put things in place along the way because they were important to us, and it's a constant reminder that this really is not a conversation about what is or is not important to us. It's a conversation about what do our, in a, in a budget adjustment mode, what's the most important? What what continually rises to the top, no matter what? And what are some of those hard decisions that we have to make that if we had? If we, if money wasn't an issue, we of course wouldn't, we'd be going, yeah, we want this and this and this too. Because um. Like I shared before. There were a lot of reductions that happened in that twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen year that. I think uh, to what you're alluding to, Dave, look like, at least as we're going through line item by line item. That's a lot of the stuff that was reduced back then, and now we're left with. Uh, the, the, the stuff you were protecting back then, right, which was what we always were trying to protect, which is our staff and our experiences for students. Um, and, and so now we, we have to. Prioritize our priorities in a sustainable fashion. Over multiple years. And we at least have to get ourselves to twenty-two, twenty-three. Right, we, we gotta, that's gotta be, and I know we can't assume anything, but like people have shared. Our community really supports our schools. We're continuing to do a good job with our kids. Our families like it here. We're going to assume we're going to continue to do that. And we just, we gotta get ourselves to that twenty-two, twenty-three school year and maintain as much of our fund balance as we can along the way. And only use what we need to use of it. Alright. So here's the next steps then. I need to know first of all, from the board, just some direction, are you okay with us adding the technology transfer, freezing that technology transfer? And um, where your thoughts are with putting? And where your thoughts are with putting. A motion of some kind on a board meeting on the twenty eighth of using some of that fund balance. So we'll, we'll add those at least for a discussion point, doesn't mean we have to, for the fund balance, Scott, to your question. It doesn't mean that we have to put a a number on it at this point. It could even be a motion that gets tabled and moved until we're ready to, and we know more information, but we probably should put that as a placeholder. For a decision as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. Then. Tomorrow, we'll find out who who all can make the twenty first for a work session. And plan on doing that in person. We will work on sending out communication about tonight's meetings, meetings, so that our staff gets a recap. And then we'll put it into the radar update for the weekend so that the our families have that. We're going to be putting a staff, like I said, a staff survey together and a family survey together to understand. Based on the list we have, what do they like, what don't they like, what questions do they have? And to your point, Dave, what ideas did this conversation spark for people that we maybe didn't? Didn't think of or come up with. We will then take what you've given us and establish more specifics, getting ready for the twenty first. And then along the way, if any other information that you're requesting comes up, send that to Kelsey or myself. So that we can get that on the cycle of us digging into a little bit more. Anything that? Questions you have based on that?
I saw Stephanie pop up.
Yeah, can I just get a copy of the slides from this presentation?
Yes, absolutely. I'll, as soon as we're off of this. Call, I will email the presentation out to to everyone so that you have a a copy of that. We'll post, we can post it to the website. This is probably a good time for us to start a section on our website about budget adjustments. And we just, like we did with COVID, we can put everything in there, and that way, if anyone in the public wants to know where are we in this process, they can see it all right there. I'm doing it that way. But yeah, I'll send that out as an email. We were actually making final adjustments to numbers. I think Jen was on the phone with Mike at, I don't know, two, three, four o'clock this afternoon, so we wanted to make sure we had stuff. Correct when we put it out, because this. This first slide deck gives me knots in my stomach because I know from experience the potential ripple effects that it has, and. Again, I can't say it enough, this is just the first iteration of options, no decisions, and not for the board, but for people listening, this is. No line in the sand, but it's a place to start. Nobody should be getting nervous at this point in time about anything, but we need to have the conversation. With that chair.
Wait, Scott, Scott.
I I was just going to recommend that we do add the technology transfer freeze to the October twenty eighth agenda. I'm fine with the use of fund balance being put on the October twenty eighth agenda, but I'm not okay with there being a dollar amount attached to that. I think we table that until we have a better. Feel for it.
Do you want me not to? I mean, I don't have to put it on there either.
I think it's a good idea to put it on there, so it it is. It is in front of the community. For those that are watching, that they know that this is, this is coming.
It'll probably provide then an opportunity again for us to lay out a presentate, like not a presentation, but a conversation, a reminder of. Here's our eleven nine eight eight is our minimum. Here's how much we have to play with.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I think that's good. I think the more that we can talk about this at public meetings, the less. Community members, families, staff will be surprised that, you know, we're having all these discussions and. So I just think the more we can just talk about it, the better.
One thing to think about for the twenty eighth is whether or not we want to. Just make it known whether that it would also be an opportunity if there were people in the community that wanted to speak to the board. That maybe we want to have a conversation about whether that's an appropriate time to do that. You know, again, getting the community involved is never going to hurt in this, in this stuff, so something to think about as a board. All right.
I I as far as that goes, I mean, we don't have a lot of time to think about it between now and the twenty eighth. And for people viewing this, I think we need to talk about what that would look like. What I would recommend is that we follow the guideline that. That was shared with us at the retreat where we simply do not. Gavel in at the start of the meeting, and we have, we have the community able to listen. Then we gavel into our to our actual meeting at some point. If there's nobody there, nobody needs to speak, great, we're in at six. If not, it would be at some point after that.
Yeah, I would agree with what Scott's saying. We can just put that to the. Presentation of agenda or whatever, and this, say. The first few minutes, whatever that takes, that could be used for folks that want to talk to the board.
Yeah, prior to roll, prior to roll call.
Prior to roll call, yes.
So to be clear, we're talking about doing that on the twenty eighth.
Correct.
Okay.
Would you want to still plan as a six o'clock start for that? Okay.
I think for consistency sake, but where it will get a little inconsistent. Well, at the six o'clock, would that be televised? Since we're not actually gavelled in and we haven't taken role and we haven't established quorum at that point, so does the, does the. Community education or the the community TV feed begin at six? Or does it begin? And and I'm not advocating one way or another, it really doesn't matter, but I I just want it. I I'd kind of like it nailed down because that way it doesn't feel like it's a last minute thing for the community if someone wants to come and talk.
That may be something we need to look into just because, one, Zoom is weird. This is not really how. Boards have set it up, and we're also very lucky that we have a local TV station, and so I don't think most school boards have their meetings televised, and so.
Well, and we'll be, we should be moving at that point to in person.
Yeah, we'd be in person on the twenty eighth.
Yes, but it depends on if we're going to do. We did talk about if we're going to have people in person or still have them attend virtually.
My understanding was the media center. Granted us capability of having public in attendance. We may still be in a situation where we, someone. Probably administrator from the middle school might have to. Manage people coming in and out to share their thoughts. But this does lead me back to to that previous conversation, I think that we've had over the last few weeks, which is. You know, how how much do we continue? How many of our meetings do we continue to? Televised, live stream, and how do they get recorded and where do they stay and just developing some policy and practice? Around that, because previously, when we've been, I mean, this leads to the twenty first, previously, when we've been in work session, that's not been a. A televised or recorded meeting. It's open, but it's not televised.
Yep, those will definitely be conversations as we go forward.
So we'll work on some of the details of that. And then we'll be able to finalize that conversation probably then on the twenty first, for sure, if not before. And if we're in person, we can probably figure out a way to have people come in, stay socially distanced if they want to do that. And then I would assume we'll work with HCTV to come up with what, however, they want to typically. How they've done it in the past when you were in person before.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, are there any other questions before we head off for the night? All right.
Just just thank, just thank you to everybody working to put this information together for us.
We have a great team, so.
All right.
All right, well, have a good night, everyone.
All right, thank you.